They set up the cameras and everything for us. So we could be more intimate around the table instead of not being able to look at each other around the dice.
But it is still an open meeting.
Yep, the doors are open, the cameras are on, we're right there now. And you're good. They have taken care of everything. Oh, are you going that way? Thank you. I'll have to eat another one to have something to play with. Like being noisy.
Yeah.
Everybody going to the Summer Fest tomorrow night?
Chamber West, Chamber West tomorrow night?
And.
And the Summer Fest. Is it the night out Summer Fest tomorrow night?
Yeah. So at five o'clock, you go to the Summer Fest and then closer to six, you leave and go over for the dinner. I have three things, just like go to this for a little bit, this little bit, and then to the dinner. Y'all should have the same things. As I had to tell Brian today, okay, we have to be here until a certain time. On my ones Friday, I had to set an alarm thirty minutes at each one. That was it. And I still, I made it to the last one because it was supposed to go till nine, I made it there at eight. And everybody had left at seven thirty. Like best laid efforts. No, that one thing was really. Thursday night, so I only have two things tomorrow.
Did you make it to the one that was hosted at Mark Pope's house or do you know?
I did not make it to Mark's.
His backyard was incredible.
What's up?
He's like, I gotta show you. He gave us a little tour. Like an oasis and.
I had it on my thing to go to if I had time, but I didn't. So. Because by the time you drive to each one, even the half hour makes it go really fast.
Yeah.
So. Did you make it to your four? Was Pope one of yours?
One of mine.
Okay.
Made it all for. We held out on hot dogs until the last.
I ate a hot dog.
Got to the last one, packing up.
We ate the hot dogs at the first one. And then I had them at the movie after, the movie for the youth at the South Granger one, whatever, Central Granger, they had movie night for the kids. They had kraut, so at nine thirty, I had another hot dog with kraut on it. But everybody's food was really good. We really only ate at the first one, but everything looked good. Oh, it is. We're just sitting here chatting along, sorry. So we will welcome everyone and call to order, we don't want to be public. Call to order the study session of the West Valley City Council. It is August twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three, and we are beginning at four thirty-two PM. We are in the council chamber of West Valley City Hall. We have in attendance virtually Councilman Harmon. Around the table, we have Councilman Norfelt, Councilman Christensen, Councilman Whitstone, and myself. Councilman Hune will be a few minutes late. And I. We will excuse Councilman Fitziamanu. We also have at the table with us, no, no. Nicole Kamik, our city recorder, and John Flores, our HR director. And Eric Bunderson, our city attorneys in the room somewhere. Our one item tonight is the city manager hiring process. And John, do you want to start with an introduction or?
Yeah.
What would you like to do?
I can definitely do that. So we, we have at this point to discuss, I believe, two items. Uh, one would be finalizing our job description for the city manager position. And the other is to further discuss potential executive search firms. And.
And we are joined by Councilman Fitziamanu.
Um, yes, further discuss and if you feel prepared to make a decision on, on selecting an executive search firm, I can do that as well.
Okay. So do you want to go over the search firms first?
Um, yeah.
Because that was pretty critical to start moving forward on that one first, correct?
Definitely.
Okay.
And I, I will add from what you received a month or two ago from me. Uh, I received this morning a fourth proposal for us to discuss and review. So I put that together, emailed to you guys about noon today.
Okay.
With that additional information on there.
Okay, thank you. So do you want to go through each one and give us your synopsis, even though it's all written down here?
Yep, no, no problem at all.
Some of us weren't able to review it ahead of time.
I did, but I've never done this before, so I can't really say like, well, this is better than that one. Or this is exorbitant price versus this is reasonable, so.
Yeah.
Open to hear, yeah, thank you.
Great. Uh, yeah, so I'll go through these, I think to start what I will date is I, I don't believe any of these are not going to provide a quality service or product. It's a it's pretty generally of the same process, they will all have their, they will each have their own unique or individual ways of doing part of the process, but generally from start to end, we're gonna, we're gonna get a, a very similar product from them. There's many, many other search firms out there. We, we tried to contact top search firms. And so this is really where we ended up. The others that we contacted that are not on this list. Some of them just said they were unavailable for, for extra work right now. Uh, others, we did get information from them. However, it, it really didn't meet anything close to, to these groups that we've got in front of you.
Okay.
Uh, so at the top, um, we have uh, kind of just given you a quick synopsis of who they are, what they do, what their experience is. Um, really just for your knowledge to, to get an idea of their experience in the field. Um, next, we provided what they've stated is their availability. Um, as you can see, SGR says we can start immediately as well as higher integrated. Uh, the two Affion and CPSHR. Uh, they gave me kind of a one to three week timeframe, they really said, well, we'll get started with you right away. Um, obviously, there might be a, a week or two of just getting things scheduled, so. I don't feel like any of these are far out from saying, let's get going.
Okay.
Uh, the cost, um, I've outlined there for you. Um, SGR, Affion and CPS. Um, you can see those fees are between twenty-five and thirty thousand. Uh, flat fee, they do have some add-ons that we can choose. Um, and we can, once, once we select, um, we can dig into what those are, some of those are where we, if we would like them to create different ads or uh, place different ads in different locations through different channels of, of reaching individuals. Um, and, and they would discuss what all of those are. However, they, their base flat fee for their base service um, is, is what you have there.
So any ad placement, they'll do, I mean, will they do any advertising for this price? It's just if we want added on stuff.
Yep, yep, if we want extra work done.
Um, did they give you an example of what they will do?
And they're all different, so.
But do they all ask for extra money for the ads? Or just the SGR?
Let's see, so SGR had for extra ad placements anywhere that cost range seventeen fifty to twenty-five hundred.
Same.
Affion didn't provide us any added fees for extra services. But was clear that if we want to bring anyone in for interviews, that is not a cost that they incur.
Right.
Uh, that would be a cost that we would have, which, which was the case for everybody.
I was gonna say, isn't that universal? Okay.
Uh, CPS, they have on here thirty-five hundred dollars for additional recruitment videos, sale pitches, anything like that, so. If we have something unique that we would like them to do. Um, you know, they said that's a thirty-five hundred dollar fee. Uh, in, in talking with any of them for these extra expenses. Um, it all depended on what we're actually asking for. Um, if it was something extreme, something, you know, we're really asking for a lot for them, those fees could be more than that. Um, they just tried to give us a kind of a ballpark of, you know, here's what we expect with additional services asked.
Okay.
Um, I have on here pros and cons, and those were really pros and cons that we, my, me and my HR team pulled out from that. Um, so under SGR, you know, we said low cost really because of the one we're looking at. They, they were the lowest B. Um, their availability was immediate. Um, they did notify us that one of their senior VPs would be the designated recruiter and the point of contact. Um, so we felt like that was a pro because, um, they're not just gonna assign us a lower level recruiter, they said we, you will have one of our top people assigned to this. Um, and then they also have a partnership with a licensed private investigation firm that when we hit that point in the process. Uh, they would, um, do that background investigation again for us. That's optional, if, if we chose to do that ourselves, we would let them know, hey, we've got, um, people here within West Valley, we can assign to do that, but that's an option, if, if we decide that's something we want to pursue.
So if we do that ourselves, do you know what that would save cost wise?
I don't know if it would save anything, but.
It might just be the same fee.
Yep.
Okay.
Something we would want to ask them about for sure.
So would you trust their people to go do the background?
Um.
Or are you still waiting to do it?
I would recommend that you as a group, I, I could bring you that, or we could discuss that with them.
Okay.
To determine if we feel like what they provide is adequate, or if we want to do more, and it could be a combined effort as well, we could tell them, yes, go do that, provide us what you get. And maybe we do some additional background investigation that we see with it, we feel is.
Depending on what they bring back?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, continuing with kind of the pros and cons. And again, this is just us comparing them to each other. Uh, Affion, um, they target organizations similar to us, so are as far as our city size. Um, they, they like to work within that, um, kind of that arena. Uh, so they felt very comfortable to take us on as a client, um, there were some others that said um, you're too big or you're too small compared to what we normally do, or we don't work in your region, we, we don't typically. You know, some of them said we focus more on the West Coast, or we focus more on the East Coast. Um, so Affion said, you know, you're, to us, you're an ideal client. Um, and then they, they have a, a team of senior executive recruiters who would be dedicated to the search, similar to what I stated with SGR.
Okay.
Um, CPS, um, they pointed out their success rate, which we felt, um, is important, um, ninety-five percent of their placements are still in their position after two years. Uh, so I think it's, it's obvious, but I'll state it. To go through this whole process and find someone that leaves in six months. Uh, it's not something, it would not be ideal for us, so. Um, that, that, we wanted to make sure we pointed out. Uh, with higher integrated, um, they're, they're available immediately, um, and then as you guys are aware, uh, they're a local firm. Uh, so they might, um, they'll know better how West Valley works, what West Valley does, what our needs are. Uh, so I think that would be an added benefit to what we do. Um, they have a strong focus on having a very quality process and having a very quality journey is what they called it through this process. And then their availability as well. A con that I've noted here with higher integrated, um, they're higher cost than the others. Um, and they don't quite have the local government experience that these other firms will have. Um, they, most of their work is in the private industry, um, that's not to say they couldn't go find people, but um, that's where their focus and their experience and their work has, has seemed to be focused on.
Okay.
Uh, they all have a service guarantee, they're all slightly different, um, but really what they're providing is if your candidate isn't employed within this timeframe, we will go through another process with you at, I believe they all say no cost, there might be some smaller costs associated, but those details are in there, I mean, the, the good thing is they all do provide one. Um, so SGR's is an eighteen month, uh, service guarantee. Um, let's see. And I, I believe every one of them, if, if the candidate, um, you know what, I'm not gonna say that, I will actually, so SGR says that if they are, if they resign, if the candidate resigns or is released by us within eighteen months, they will repeat the process. Affion was a twenty-four month service guarantee, um, which is great. Um, if they are asked to leave for non-performance or they resign within those twenty-four months, they will repeat the search. So what that leaves out is if they do something wrong and we, and you.
I'll have to dismiss them.
Yes, then it's not covered in that.
Oh, interesting.
Um, and my, my assumption would be they would say that wasn't due to anything we took part in, that was that own individual's decision or, or whatever occurred there. Um, CPS, if the selected candidate ends employment within twelve months of service. They didn't get into the details of what that end of employment means, and so maybe they just cover, I would assume they would cover any whether that's us making the decision, the candidate making the decision to resign or um, within the first twelve months, they will cover that. And higher integrated just stated that if a selected candidate is employed less than twelve months, they will again repeat that process. It's a little bit different details in, in what they consider there, but it is good to know they all, they all provide that.
So Affion, if the Canada's candidate is asked to leave for reasons of non-performance or resigns.
Yeah.
So that's both.
Yeah, right.
Okay, the same as S, I mean, yeah, SGR?
Uh, yes, um. Yeah. Yep, or it's really, so yes, I would say those are, I mean, they defined there differently, but.
Right. But it's supposed to have the same.
Go a little more specific.
Right.
Yeah.
And just is released.
And the, uh, CPS is only if they resign, not if we terminate.
Yeah, so they, they, all they stated was ends employment, um, and I, it does sound like, yes, if, if the candidate makes that decision, but if we choose to end employment, then that is not something they would cover. Higher integrated just said in general, if employment ended. Uh, the last item there is we just, they, they provided, uh, previous entities they've worked for and positions that they filled. Uh, so it kind of gives you an idea of, of what they've done in the past, how that compares to us and what we by we, I mean, our HR group would look at there is have handled cities our size, have you handled positions similar to this? Um, are you, are your capabilities, can you show your capabilities through your previous work? Um, and so I think each of those shows the one I would point out, which I've already stated is higher integrated has done some work, which, um, you guys are aware of with us. Um, and let me back up a little bit, higher integrated, that firm didn't specifically do that work with us.
I was gonna say.
Emily Rushton, Emily Rushton did that work with us while working for a previous employer. Uh, but she did point that out in her proposal.
Okay.
Um, and then higher integrated has done. Uh, they pointed out some higher level positions that they've recruited for, but there was nothing else specific to a, um.
City manager type thing.
City manager, municipality type stuff.
And you mentioned that it was a really thorough, you know, proposal outline. Yes, was it? Um, how do I say this? Was the fee that's being charged? I mean, equivalent to services that were being offered? I mean, why is it still higher?
Um, so as far as my knowledge in search firms in general. I would say a thirty percent of the first year salary is, um, that's pretty general across the board. Um, these other entities working with public sector only um, tend to charge a lower fee. Now, I don't know the reason behind that, um, my, my guess for that would be um, two things, one is that, uh, working in the public with, with public entities. Um, there usually isn't a larger budget. And though, right, salaries are lower and they just know budgets for public entities are tighter. Um, and then also there, the competition in their market isn't driving their fees higher. Um, if one of these went out and said, I'm gonna charge much higher, they're probably just gonna lose to the competition, so that has kept those fees lower. Where in the private industry, that thirty percent is pretty standard.
I mean, yeah, people should be fairly compensated for the work they do, I was just wondering why it was such a discrepancy, whether there's anything else and that they were offering that the others weren't offering or something like that.
Just, uh, process fall under RFP rules, we select the lowest responsible bidder.
Um, it does not.
Is that Eric nodding no? Did our attorney say no?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So. Um, I may not permit exactly how I, I'm supposed to, or as Eric would, but as far as it not being required to be under the RFP.
Right, this, this falls under one of the.
There, there.
Yeah, I don't, I think the speakers are actually right here, the microphones.
Okay.
So, yeah, this, uh, Eric Bunderson, city attorney, this falls under the very specialized services, uh, exception to bids under our procurement code.
Yeah.
That is the shortest answer to a procurement question I've ever seen.
There you go, Eric.
Um, I, I'll point out to, um, because it was asked, um, the, the proposals we received, you know, what them explaining the type of work they would do, what their process would look like, I have those, can definitely send them to you, they're all twenty to thirty pages long. So that, that's why I tried to get me and my team, we'll go through and do the work for you. But if you want those and want to review them, I will happily send them to you. Um, if you wanted to dig deeper into those, but they can be pretty extensive.
Okay. So anybody have a way they're leaning right now? I don't know how to decide this one for you, if we just go one, two, three, four and do votes. Councilman Harmon, did you have something?
Hey, yeah, sorry, I can't be there with you guys, uh. I hope you can't hear too much of the background noise, but, uh, any, any of the four would be fine, uh, if I was gonna pull the trigger on one, it, it would be the uh, it would be the Af- Affion. Um, I just, only because, uh, I've looked at all, well, the first three of their websites, and I just felt like that was, um, oh, had, had a better, was better resource for both candidates and uh, cities that would be looking to use their services, so. And the one thing of the strategic government resource, I think, uh, they had a map that showed previous clients and they haven't done any in Utah or Idaho, maybe none of them have, I don't know, but, uh, that was just a couple of things I noticed, so I think any of them would be fine, but my choices would be Affion.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
I would be fine with Affion or any of the first three. If I were to, if it was up to me, I would probably go with this SGR. Just mostly because they're available. And I, and I feel a sense of urgency.
I like, I, I mean, me, it won't matter, Affion had a little bit longer guarantee.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is a plus.
The thing I liked with CPS is ninety-five percent placements are still there. Then you don't need their guarantee.
Right.
Did the, did, um, SGR or Affion report their success rate?
I, um, I don't believe so. Could look back through these.
A hundred pages, come on. But you probably would have put that in there if it had been, because it would have been more apples to apples instead of. Yeah, and then the other thing is they did one hiring in Aurora, Colorado, which I thought was the closest to us, Reno, they don't have this, Colorado seems to have more of the same kind of culture, or they did twenty years ago.
Affion has one in Commerce City, Colorado.
Okay, there was another one with, yep, okay.
The cost for me, that's with those first three too, I think.
Yeah.
They could all do a good job.
Yeah, the last one's a little cost prohibitive.
Yeah.
Okay. And then not city experience as far as city managers.
Education, say experiences.
Yeah.
Tom said, rest have a flat fee for
Right.
Government entities, apparently. I bet if they were doing private industry.
They would be higher.
It would be thirty percent too.
Yeah. Probably. Because they have been successful in helping with those, so. Okay.
Is it an appropriate decision of the council to?
I was just getting.
This, this is like narrow it to two and then let.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask Eric, can we even vote to get it down to one in a study session where it's this decision?
It would be more of just the informal or if you agree on direction.
Okay, not a roll call vote.
Meeting, so.
Yeah.
Okay. If it was in a closed session, no, but.
Well, yeah, but you've still got to, you've still got to do an issue, a resolution and passes, so.
In the future.
In, in the future, yeah, so I think.
We could narrow it down to one.
You certainly could.
And then vote on it in a regular meeting.
Yeah, go down to morning, get it started on there.
Yeah, because then that one to three weeks.
Yeah.
By the time we go study, da, 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 and we can do a study regular in one week if we fill the need.
Sure.
Okay, to get it moving faster.
Yes.
Okay.
Um.
Ranked choice vote.
I was just gonna say, happy on who? How many for Affion? Three there. Um, SGR. Oh, what? Oh, it did go up? Sorry, Scott, I didn't pay attention.
Sorry, did you say something?
Oh, I just thought that Scott's hand was raised.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I wasn't looking up, so.
It sounds like we have four for Affion.
Yeah, so I think. Nope, there's four, if Scott's on for that one, then I think we're.
And I can live with Affion for sure.
Okay, because you were SGR a little bit stronger, but, okay. All good with that?
I, I see, we're moving forward.
Yeah, we would look. That's here. You got four, four, so, yeah, go ahead and move forward.
Yeah, we don't have to go any further, there was no three, three, one. Hey, so that part's done.
Great.
You know, I gotta find my other one.
I'm doing.
I know there's an easier way, but. So you sent us both the job description and the state code.
Yeah.
Does our municipal code follow the state code exactly?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, cause it says both on there.
Yeah, and.
And then the only addition was this little. Paragraph.
Further down the.
Yeah, that said qualifications.
Yes, and that comes. From our municipal code.
Okay. But it's the state code that it.
I'm sorry, not ours.
Not ours, just the state.
Yes, yep.
Okay. Yes.
Scott just sent me a message and just said he had to go if he finds the current condition description or any changes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so. Does anyone else have any changes they would like to make?
I think, and this is not. Actually, this is not even my. Personal idea, but um. Even the recent conversations and and sort of the general will. Of folks on the council, I went through and highlighted all the pieces in here, even if they're. Encoded or embedded in the municipal code or the state code that actually highlight where the city council. Actually has the consenting or the directional. Power if we want to call it that here.
Okay.
And I'm wondering, and there's a lot, right? So I'm wondering if we add that, um, so in paragraph one, two, three, four. Where it says appoint with the advice and consent of the city council. This is actually. From the the code. I'm wondering just to make everything very clear, um, if we add that into the general summary. Um, because the summary just says to act as a chief executive officer of the city, manage all aspects of it. It doesn't say anything about the relationship to the city council. And I'm wondering if in that just first line. That just be very clear. That it says your job is to manage the city um with the advice and consent of the city council.
So are you saying move that to the top?
Or copy it to the top.
Copy it to the top, yeah.
Cause I know that comes up a lot in, you know, and so just to clarify that from the. I'm not saying it's necessary, I'm just saying that. We don't speak about it in the summary. And if we wanted to make that.
Very top.
Yeah, the very, very.
I think that that's in places. Where. Before the. The. Managers. Final decision is is final. We have to approve something. So if we say that that's for everything. Then.
And it would slow things down.
Then we have to approve everything.
But that's what's in here.
And so all I'm, all I'm saying is that.
So that is the code though.
So before he hires someone to 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 clean the bathrooms, we have to sign up.
It says directors, the city attorney. Director, so.
We move that to the top for all the duties.
So.
Better than.
My explanation or a better explanation would be um to clarify the role or the relationship between the city manager and the city council. In the summary, because it doesn't mention anything in the in the code and in this description. I'm with Scott. I didn't mark anything to add or subtract here necessarily. I think it's clear if you read the whole thing, but. Because this discussion about form of government and roles of government, et cetera. That would be a suggestion for me. But maybe not take that exact language because.
Means something.
And that's specific to this.
But that's what the code is. So before any of these are hired or positions cur- um decided. It should be brought to the council for consent and.
So I I'm not saying take that out of that.
Right.
I'm not, but what I'm saying is don't take those words. And put it in the beginning so that everything.
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly as it is, is what he would like it moved up just.
So what would the words be?
And I don't know. Summary? No, 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 because that is specific to just the qualified persons of those particular offices. I'm saying in the summary, if I read the summary now and didn't read anything else. Yeah, it seems like I'm working on my own with my own authority and not under the authority of the council.
Under the authority of the city council. Act as chief executive officer of West Valley City.
Consist or just the suggestion consistent with. Uh municipal code. You times.
Sure.
So even if you just put in with the advice and consent of city council consistent with municipal code. In the summary section.
But advice and consent. In these words means. We have to sign off.
Have you read that paragraph? So we should be signing off on who's for each director. Just these things, not everything that the city manager does.
Right.
Yeah.
But what they're saying is. That the city manager's role is to manage with the. Advice and consent of the city council.
Yeah, but only to this. So I don't know how you. Consolidate it without explaining exactly which. Items.
So I don't. What I'm saying is. Advice and consent.
Yeah.
Of the city council in that summary when describing. Everything that that the manager does. Yeah.
Under the direction of the city council. It would mean that what he, anything he does. Could be directed by the city council.
And I'm with you, I'm making the same face because I know what I'm trying to do here, but I don't have the words.
But that would.
We don't, we don't want to direct everything.
And what to do.
No, but.
But all I'm saying is that the current summary doesn't include the relationship with the.
Yes, I I think you're making an excellent point.
Yeah. Or maybe in the form of government charter, it has better words.
Okay.
Wondered if there's something there that would help.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it is best that they know they can't just go out and hire everybody. They have to have.
Yeah, and if they.
For the directors, yeah.
All there, but.
This will. Are you gonna have this entire thing as a job description?
Yeah.
The municipal code?
Yes, this is our job description.
We don't want something different than the code.
No. And that's why I'm trying to figure out. Do we need a summary at the top? Or is that part of the code?
It's not part of the code, that was just.
Okay.
Uh, kind of a quick. General, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out. So the summary is.
Relationship with the city managers, what we really should be asking.
Works under our direction.
But.
But it's spelled out in very specific.
We direct every little detail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
Perform those tasks and you don't have to be.
Oh, so like in a strategic plan, we say we want three parks done this year. Find a way. Is that what you're meaning that?
Right, and we're.
We give direction as far as strategic plan, but not the day to day workings.
Halfway down page two, it does say to discharge any other duties specified by statute or imposed by the city council.
Right.
That one's very general and that's not attached to any specific. So maybe you see where that.
Would you put that in the summary? Would that be enough of what you want?
I'm, I think it's.
Closer, okay.
But advice and consent, but. I don't know. You see where that part is? Yeah. Because then it cites the statute like you were saying, but it also gives the leeway that, yeah, city council can impose. Policies and you're gonna have to deal with it.
Right. Right. Manage all aspects of the administrative functions of the city. Including. Enacting the policies and. Duties, the other word that that used.
Kind of like the last half of that sentence though. And it's closer to what I was trying to say.
Yeah, you could almost just add specified by statute. And pose my city council at the end of that.
All aspects of the administrative functions of the city. According to the specified by statute or imposed by the city.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was about to do that.
Did you get that? Did somebody get that?
Yes, I will.
The last one he just said.
What's your opinion, attorney?
Um, oh, so.
So figure, yeah.
So this, but it would just be.
So, okay, so that is the. Very last item in the state code. Under the manager. Hour and duties, which.
And then everything below that is city code?
Uh, yeah.
So that's how the state defines our relationship.
Right, yeah, and so you would like to move that up to the.
Part of the summary.
And so that, so that the relationship with council is part of the summary. I think that's a good idea to put that.
No issue doing that.
Besides that, I'm like Scott, I didn't have too much to. What could I?
Right, it's code and. The only other thought I had, and I mentioned this before, and this is feedback I've received, was that the city manager should reside within the city limits.
Yeah. And we do either. So do we not have a resolution that says that already? We're playing on.
About residency.
Residency in the city. Okay, so we'll.
Contract.
Well, but I think we need to put it in the code. So a resolution stating that, so it's in the code. Before. So would we need to do that before we send this out for hiring someone? And then add it to the code?
Where they were hired.
Okay. Okay. And um. So do you wanna? Bring the code just to be necessary to live in the city. But for a new hire. Would you want to give them six months or a year to be able to get established in the city? If you have to build a house or buy a house or. Figure out a house. I know Chief, when we hired them, they lived in a trailer park for, I don't know how long while their house was being built. But I literally do not know how long. Do you remember at all? Is that what it was? So six a year would probably be reasonable. Does that fly with anybody or is that? Not reasonable. So in the resolution, can we put that? Once hired a city manager. Must move to the city within twelve months and reside there until end of job? I don't know how you phrase that, so it. If in twenty years we hire another city manager, it's already in there. But it stays in there for. The acting one as well.
I understand what you're you're asking and so old.
Your wordsmith that?
Yeah, I'll go over a little with you guys.
Okay. So in the past, the city manager and the assistant city manager have lived in the city. And understanding, but not by statute. So does anybody want to? As we're doing the one, do the other as living in the city as well? An assistant? You would?
Yeah, I I would, but also I think only six months, I think the, I don't know. Four months is a little too long. You know, uh, Russell, he can do that. He's he's leaving a trailer.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
But they didn't live in the city. They were in like. I don't know where they were at. They were just in a trailer park somewhere.
Somewhere.
Outside of the city, cause we don't. And I don't know if it was a travel, I don't even know what it was, travel trailer or mobile home park. I don't know.
Yeah, that's my. We could, that would be. Need to do that.
Have we done that in the past, you know?
If we're gonna require that they live in the city, we should cover their.
I can't think of a situation where we have.
We didn't cover chiefs when he moved from wherever.
So I could go. Find that out.
I know, cause. You weren't in your position at that time, right?
Not this current position, but I was here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't know how much you were working with that move.
We should do that.
Uh, that would be completely up to you. As a group, if if that was something you wanted to offer.
I think it should be in there. Yeah.
I was hired by the Boy Scouts. California and I live with an hand. Trying to find a house.
Okay.
In the district, they they told me where I could look to because they said.
Oh, to be with. In the boundaries, okay.
Council with this. City or the area where I was working.
Oh, so like we have a Salt Lake Council and a Provo Council. Probably, well, we did, we have.
It's all northern Cal- northern Utah now.
Yeah, but that would be the situation.
Tired of Los Angeles area council.
Okay.
They assigned me to work in, I forget the name of the district, but it had three cities in it, Bell. Uh, Commerce. And Downey, I think was the third.
Okay.
Bell was.
Okay.
Commerce City was exactly that.
Okay.
There were no residential areas in Commerce.
Not too many scouts.
My price range.
Okay.
I lived in Bell.
Okay.
But. I had to do that, you know, as I moved in.
Right.
They gave me, I think, six months or three months to. Get into the community.
Okay. So does everybody agree that moving expenses should be put in there?
Yes, should be.
Yeah.
No one asked, so does everyone agree that living in the city should be a requirement? But uh, I think we have four. I just want to go on record that that. I do not think it should be a requirement.
Okay.
And I think I've made that explain that. In the past, I need to explain it again.
I was very close behind you, but if we, as so far as we have. A year allowance, you know, for folks that. Could be in that applicant pool. Were willing to come over. That was okay with us.
Okay. What was the limit on finding a new one if they? Whether we're released, so if in a year, twenty-four, so, hey, we're covered if they decide they don't want to move in. Okay. So moving expenses, live in the city. And then is there an appetite for the, if he's redoing it? For living in the city for the assistant city manager as well?
I believe so. We took off earlier, I think a couple of people.
Lars would still be a no. Yeah, I think it's necessary too, but.
Yes.
You.
I, at one time I was very adamant about. Directors. Living in the city. Because I was told that we didn't have the housing that the directors would need.
We have that housing now, so, yes.
At least the assistant city manager.
Okay. So when you redo it, will you do it for both please? Okay. Thank you. Okay, was there any other changes or additions? It didn't sound like. Anybody really. Just from. That one paragraph, that to discharge any duties. Then that other stuff you could change later if you wanted, but.
Yeah. But if we can implement something, we can take it away if it doesn't work.
There you go.
But we should make informed, good decisions the first time.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so I'm looking all, you have any other changes with this? No? Tom, did you have any other changes you want to make?
Not right now.
Okay.
I I wrote something at home if I got.
Okay, Jake. You're good with it as it stands with those changes? Okay. Then I think we all have our direction.
Yes, um, just to clarify, on the moving expenses. Are you expecting me to put that into the job description or? Or was that just a discussion? Make sure it's part of the job offer.
I think I do. The part of the job offer, don't you?
I think it would be more appropriate, yes.
In the job offer, okay.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Yeah, that's out of my will.
There's job description and then there's. This is, you know. That moving expense should be part of their benefits.
Yes, yeah, part of the job offer, you have benefits, whether that's through a a contract, it's negotiated or just through a job offer. To me, that would be the most appropriate place for that to be stated.
Okay. You're the expert on that one, so I would. Go with your recommendation.
I was thinking about the vehicle. I don't know what you guys thinking about us. I was thinking about the vehicle, I don't know what you guys thinking about us, uh.
That would, I think, be part of the job offer, not part of the.
I, I mean, like, yeah.
Job description.
Uh, I.
Yeah.
It's kinda separate from that, just kinda thinking about the city manager, the new city manager, I can, we're gonna provide them a vehicle. To bring home, or we don't have to do that, so I wanna bring it up to you guys, so what you guys thinking about?
Where they're living in the city, for myself, I'm good with providing a car. I think that's pretty standard in a level of job, this, this level of a job.
Okay.
And they definitely need a vehicle to, to do their job, I mean.
Yeah, there's a lot of meetings.
There's, and, and they need to know the city, right? I mean, you can't tell the city just from your office, so.
And if they're living in the city, they would be on twenty-four hour call.
Right.
So they would need a vehicle at home to get to where they're being called to.
They're, they're on twenty-four hour call, even if they don't live in the city, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everybody else?
Yeah, I never.
Okay. Are you good with that, as long as it's in the city?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a big.
I just wanna hit.
Yeah. Okay, I don't see any other comments. We have not been told we need a closed session today. And I don't see anybody piping up, so if we're finished, we just have one more motion. On all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. So every single one of my meetings.